All right, we'll talk later.
On June 16th, 2021, Governor Baker signed into law an act extending certain COVID-19 measures to adopt during state of emergency. This act includes an extension until April 1st, 2022, of the remote meeting provisions of his March 12th, 2020 executive order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting. For Governor Baker's extension, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. Meeting will be conducted hybrid. Join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. Steve Crane standing, we have a moment of silence. One of our faculty members, Professor Riccio, passed away, he was a graphic arts instructor. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I tell everybody a little bit about Mr. Riccio?
Yes, please.
So Mr. Riccio was a graphic arts teacher here at Whittier Tech for 28 years.
Whoa.
Students used to comment, he used to hum along with his graphics machines in his shop. He coached baseball and soccer for many years, is one of the few coaches that used to be able to drive a bus. Mr. Riccio loved music and was a frequent volunteer at our school plays and our music nights. He always had a smile and was a true gentleman. He was a father of five of his own children, but a father figure to so many Whittier Tech students. Mr. Riccio will be missed, but what he has done for so many students and staff will never be forgotten here at Whittier Tech.
Mr. Chairman, public comment.
Comments can be emailed in advance at 6:30 PM stock time to lrian@whittier.tech.ma.us. All comments will be recorded to the record. Any and all attempts will be made to mention them live during the meeting. Any emails received during the meeting will be mentioned at the following meeting. Approval of minutes.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Tucker. I move the approval of January 12th minutes of the regular school committee meetings.
Okay. Second. Any questions or comments? Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
I'm staying.
Mr. LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Avon.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Okay, let's see. This is true.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Okay. Treasury report.
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
Questions, comments, Treasury's report. You've been heard, roll call vote. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Avon.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
This is true.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Moving on. We have no new, no all old business posted. And we have no reports in communications tonight by the student rep. Sports.
I'm not sure why, I'm sorry.
Superintendent's report, superintendent question.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Tonight, for informational purposes, I have personnel actions, I have community outreach, translator hires, the resignation of a cafeteria worker. Budget update, the executive subcommittee met earlier this evening and we are recommending a budget of a 6.74% budget increase for next year. MCAS update, on February 2nd and 3rd, we had 11 sophomores, we take the biology MCAS to meet this part of the MCAS graduation requirement. On Tuesday, January 18th, Commissioners Zoom meeting to discuss the new testing program. Staff and students were able to opt in to receive at-home testing kits. We're asking all staff and students to test on Sunday evenings before coming to school. On Wednesday, January 19th, I had an interview with Winn on WHAV radio. He's asked for us to set up a monthly interview. On Wednesday, January 19th, we had yet another COVID webinar to go over the specifics of the COVID at-home test kits. On Tuesday, January 25th, as a part of the Board of Mass Hire, we had our quarterly meeting. On Thursday, January 27th, Northern Essex Community College Vice President Dr. Paul Bowden and Marcy Jaeger came for a visit. We toured the building and discussed how we can continue to develop partnerships with one another. On Tuesday, February 1st, the CBT Partnership Program meeting with our Whittier Tech staff. I'm happy to report that we're still continuing work on our pilot program with our district seniors looking at vocational education. On Tuesday, February 8th, Elizabeth Bennett, the Associate Commissioner of Vocational Ed, visited our vocational programs. She left very impressed with our faculty and all of our programs. It was a wonderful visit. And on February 8th, the Merrimack Valley Superintents Association, we had another virtual meeting and we discussed COVID issues. We are actually planning on coming here for the next meeting in March. So our COVID numbers for January, there was definitely a surge here after vacation. We had 283 student cases and 38 staff. In February, as of right now, we had 10 student cases and one staff member. But when I look today, we did not have a single case. So this was a great day today at Whittier Tech. Our admissions numbers, as of right now, for seventh gradeers, we have 788 admissions applications. So that is the highest I have. So our COVID testing programs, students and staff had to opt in. So we have 565 students out of 1264 choose to opt into the testing program. And we have 188 staff out of 28 choose to opt into the testing program. We're asking students and staff to test on Sunday evenings before coming to school on Monday morning. And this has been a great opportunity for our students and staff to test themselves weekly and hopefully keep our community healthy. As many of you know, Desi will be lifting the mask mandate on February 28th. Our current policy states a school committee will determine when to lift the mask mandate. I did do a brief staff survey and approximately 70% of the staff feel like it should be an individual choice as to whether to wear a mask or not. If the mask mandate is lifted, there is concern about those who may still want to wear a mask and how they may be treated by their peers. I do think that is something we need to be aware of. I spoke to Mary Conley at Hable's Department of Health today. She was aware of Desi's announcement today and his agreement that the COVID numbers have decreased significantly in the city of April and this might be the right time for her to take the mask.
Are there any guys? Can you guys hear?
No, it's like you guys flipped out for a little bit.
Can you hear the meeting?
I can't hear the meeting. I can't hear the meeting room.
Shoot. No, it died.
Can you hear it?
I can't, I can't hear the meeting. Yeah.
We can hear you now.
Now we can hear you.
All right, we're back.
All right.
Mr. LaBella.
Yes. I'm the superintendent. Are there any other provisions on the last mask lifting on the 28th?
What do you mean, any other provisions?
Do they have to have their booster shot?
As of right now, there are no other provisions.
There are no other provisions. So it's the same rules that are now continued.
I'm not sure. So they're just saying that as of February 28th, they're lifting the mask mandate, whether you're vaccinated or not. You can choose to wear a mask or not.
Okay.
That's for all schools?
Yes.
But that's a state.
Statewide.
State, but we have the right, I shouldn't say the right, to amend that or not?
So it's within your policy that you voted on right now that Whittier Tech does have a mask policy.
And until you choose to rescind that.
Maureen, can I interrupt for a second?
Sorry.
We're hearing feedback and it's like high pitched screeching.
Where? I've been told that before.
Not you.
We think it's Charlie. Oh, it's, it's, something's wrong with the audio. Could you just ask Kevin or whoever it is to check it?
Yeah, it just stopped. It stopped, but it's happened twice now.
Yeah, so we've missed some of what you're saying. We get the gist, we're getting the general gist, but.
Yes, so basically, and I'm reading the last sentence of your policy. This policy will remain in place until rescinded by the school committee.
Okay.
Would you like a motion? Well, that we could follow the state guidelines and remove masks as of February 28th per state recommendation.
I second that.
Okay. Any discussion?
With the provision, with the provision, I would hope that students who choose to wear a mask can still wear a mask.
Oh, yeah.
Encourage, encourage mask wearing.
Yeah.
That's what Desi is saying.
Right.
So we're going to be following Desi's guidelines.
Yes, so therefore, students who would like to wear a mask may wear a mask. Students who do not want to wear a mask will not have to wear a mask. And then the school has to deal with how, how we're going to possibly have to deal with students who are uneasy, but I think that's a good beginning.
Mr. LaBella.
Should we, excuse me. Should we add any provision in regard to the COVID testing?
No, I think we're here for mask.
Right, but should we, for instance, say all of a sudden we have a large outbreak of students testing positive. Should we reinstitute the mask policy or forget it?
I, I see.
Go ahead, yeah.
I see us going, if this continues, I see us kind of going back and forth, right? Like right now might be the time to take off the masks.
Highs and lows.
And then next November, it might be time for us to all put the masks back on and I might be coming to you asking for another. We all need to put the masks back on. You know, it's, it's too hard for me to say exactly how this is going to go. I'd love to say that we will never have to wear masks and this is all over, but it's, it's a tricky little disease.
Maureen, I think it gives you the option as the leader of the school to strongly suggest, I mean, if the COVID numbers start going up in the school, you don't have to come back necessarily to us. I think it's under your purview to be able to just say, we strongly urge you to, because of the situation, to wear a mask again.
Yes.
Yeah, there has to be a mechanism for people to not have to come to us.
Right, but that's not part of this. This, uh.
We should put it in the.
This pile of this motion.
We should put it in the motion.
We could always have a.
Okay, if you want to go that route, okay.
It will take what, two days to post it?
Yeah, we'd have 48 hours.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, or we could put in this as an additional amendment that we're going to leave the decision to reinstitute mask policy up to the superintendent as needed.
Why don't we just leave it alone, Charlie, and let's see the problem?
Yeah, I think we should have representation from our communities, not just me.
Yeah, we just leave it alone to the problem, we can have it arranged.
Right, and we can, we can zoom it or whatever, so we can do that within two days.
Okay.
We'll be optimistic.
Yes, let's be optimistic.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I just, I just wanted to know, has there been any student discussion about masks? I haven't, you know, we're not privy to that information, you know, but you, you, you hear probably more than what we would hear. I'm just curious to know how students feel. In a general sense, like what are you hearing in the, you know, from, from your staff?
Well, I, I think, you know, for instance, I went to a wrestling match on Saturday. It's really hard to wrestle with a match, a mask on. You know, I think kids are, you know, it's hard to, to see, I'd love to be able to see these kids' faces again. You know, I'd love to see smiles again. I'd love to know, see affect again, you know, you know, it's. But on that end, you know, I also know that kids have parents or family that may be not well and they shouldn't feel uncomfortable wearing a mask. I know myself, I probably will wear a mask. And I think that really should be a personal decision for the kids and we, we as staff need to support those kids that choose to wear a mask and make them feel just as comfortable as those kids that choose not to wear a mask.
And do you feel like the staff is prepared to, is that something that you're discussing now as a staff, like how we're going to manage this going forward?
Well, this just came out today.
Okay.
But I, I, I know the staff are thinking about it just from the survey, there, there is concern. You know, and, you know, I think you're going to hear from three, three people later on after this discussion, that, you know, these are concerns that we just need to address and make sure our kids are being taken care of and this is just yet another step in that process. So, you know, there, there has to be some sense of normalcy, but there also has to be some sense of safety as well.
Yeah, so school nurses, do they give their, they also gave their input, people?
Yep, again, I did the staff survey today.
Okay.
The, the Desi Commissioner call we had this morning, they work with the, the State Department of Health. So this didn't just come from an educational perspective, they, they did work with the Department of Public Health in making this decision. And I actually called Hable's Department of Public Health here at Whittier as well to kind of get another perspective of that thought process as well. The numbers have, were really bad, you know, right after the holiday and have improved significantly in the last week or so. And we're looking at another two weeks before, before the masks come off.
Mr. Fitzgerald, you have a question?
Just a thought or throw out to everybody. Every time we have a school break, right after that school break, whether it be Thanksgiving, Christmas, whatever, we always see the numbers jump because people are about. We want to thank the 28th is the earliest weekend, but we want to extend it a week. After, again, just, just a thought, didn't know people thought that way or not. Just to put that out there.
Yeah, I thought of that. I just think it would be really difficult to manage that piece of it. But certainly, you know, the other part of this is on school buses, they are still going to have to wear a mask because that is a federal mandate. So even though they're, they won't be wearing a mask here in the building, they will have to wear a mask on the school bus.
That's a federal mandate?
That's a federal mandate.
Public transportation, that's why.
Are there still going to be social distancing or is that gone as well?
Well, I mean, social distancing, really, we haven't been doing much of that. You know, we try to do it in the cafeteria, but it's definitely not three, six feet. And I guess that sort of has been my, what I've been using as kind of a, my thought process in all of this is the cafeteria, the kids have their masks off and they're having lunch. It's a little bit distant, but not, not too much and we have not seen spread in the cafeteria. If there was a place where we would see some issues, it would be the calf and we have not seen it there.
Any more questions or comments? So we have a motion and a second to follow the Desi guidelines. We're going to take a roll call vote. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Avon.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
This is true.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
And Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Like a full bow. Anything else, Maureen?
Yes, I would like to ask Ms. Buco, Ms. Rossi, and Ms. Katania to come up and talk about our advisory program.
Mr. Chairman, can I first of all, before they start speaking, wish my two very dear guidance counselors, very happy school counselor of the week this week?
Happy school counselor of the week.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Superintendent Lynch, and the rest of the school committee. My name is Rachel Rossi, I'm the school counselor here. I'm here with the other advisory program team, they introduce themselves and they come up to tell you a little bit about our program.
Will you turn up the volume a little? Let's.
It's good, it's a good connection.
Yes, take one of Scott's.
Good job, Rich.
Thank you, Rich.
Go ahead.
Is it someone you can hear now, okay?
It's right here, check the air.
Yeah, it's here.
Hello, can you hear now?
Very faintly. It's faint, yeah, I can barely hear you.
It's going on, it turns right off.
You guys can hear the committee well, right, just like the presentation?
How about now? Hi, hi.
We can hear that, yeah.
Yep, go ahead. Don't touch.
I won't touch it. All right, thank you.
That's better.
Thank you. Thank you. In the summer of 2020, various committees were formed to address the impact of COVID on our students. One committee, the Wellness Committee, focused on the social, emotional, and the mental health impact on our students. Whittier Tech had already begun, begun to focus on social, emotional learning, but we knew we had to do more, especially now. Through a research-based process, the primary intervention suggested by the Wellness Committee was the implementation of what is now called our advisory program. We are now on our second year of advisory. What was born of a pandemic is now a tier-one social, emotional learning, school-wide program that we're extremely proud of. And without Superintendent Lynch and Principal Leganis's support and vision, we're so appreciative because this would have never come to fruition. Our primary goal is basically the why, the why are we doing this? And it's our connections and during COVID, connections really broke down. And as you know, in the hierarchy of needs, Maslow's hierarchy of needs, the bottom foundation is you're connecting to others. And we just, you want to use this as an example, this quote. "When students make a lasting connection with at least one caring adult, academic and personal outcomes improve. A significant adult who provides support and direction in difficult times is an important factor in helping students avoid academic failure and a variety of other problems."
Good evening. Thank you all again for having us. My name is Michelle Katina and as you know, I'm one of the guidance counselors. So I'm just going to take off where Mrs. Rossi left off. So you heard about the why. So now I'm going to talk about the vision. The Whittier Tech Advisory Vision, as Rachel said, focuses on connections and building relationships. The Whittier Voke Tech Advisory Program builds a student wildcat who connects with themselves, a trusted small group community, and an adult advocate, and ultimately, the student body as a whole. So how advisory works? So a small group of students are paired up with an advisor at a non-academic time. So this is a non-academic program. Advisories meet on Thursdays during first period on week two and they run from approximately 15 to 30 minutes. Professional development has been provided for the advisors as well as support. So for example, if any of the advisors need to consult with us on any of the activities or the lessons, they're more than welcome to do that at any time. If they need a counselor to go and visit one of the advisors at a time where perhaps there may be a need for a counselor, if there's a heavy topic they're talking about, we're available to do that. And then the curriculum for the advisors is also provided and we have an advisory website. So if there is a time that you wanted to go and check that out, we can send you the link. And just as a visual, it has all the dates of advisories and the lessons and activities correspond with those dates. And they range from student stress management to goal setting to mindfulness to time management. So all those different activities to help students build relationships. But as Rachel had said, as well as some of that social, emotional, mental health support. So thank you.
Just a minute, we have a question.
Oh, one question.
I got a question.
Yeah.
These small groups, are they formed heterogeneously or homogenically? I mean, that I mean, is it the same class year or the same disciplines or?
So, so right now, the way that it's formed, it's the teacher and the students that are in their class during, for first period for this year's model. So we're just, we're kind of, as with any program, you always want to reflect and enhance and stuff. So we're kind of just looking at that right now. But for right now, the students are with their first period teacher. But it is a non-academic time. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kristen Bucko. I'm a special education teacher here and I'm in charge of PR. So Katie Parsons wrote an amazing article and I highly recommend you all take a look at it. It's on the Whittier Tech website. She did a fantastic job with a snapshot of how it's actually going. So I'm going to step around to the podium. I hope you can still hear me. We want to know, you want to know how it's actually going. You can put all the logistics together and we can have a vision. But we have a bit of feedback from staff members and students as to how it's going so far. So student advisory is so beneficial because it gives students an outlet without judgment to share their ideas. Medical assisting instructor Nancy Amma said, "Since the program has started, I feel like the students and I have become so much more connected and understand each other better." Because of the pandemic, we've missed opportunities to connect with our peers. During advisory, we have a chance to socialize a little bit. It helped me make more friends and connect with kids outside of my friend group and Patrick Sasso Jr. from Be Very. And I can't remember if we have, oh yeah, so just one final thought and obviously we'll take questions at some point. But we really feel like children will need a trusted adult with whom they share their thoughts. Research on previous disasters shows that a teacher is most likely that trusted adult. But whether that teacher's response is supportive determines whether students' wellbeing improves.
Does anybody have questions?
I have.
Well, yeah, I just, I just wanted you to say, oh, I appreciate how important the guidance counselors are to give, to give guidance to a lot of kids and it's, it's a very trying times. And I think you've really taken the bull by the horns and gotten ahead of this issue as well as the remedial problems we have with the incoming ninth graders and the emotional problems. I think you're doing a good job that you get ahead.
Thank you.
I like to thank you and happy guidance counselor.
Could have used you in 1980.
Mr. James.
Impressed, guys, really impressive. I'm so proud of you. You can so need it, as you guys do too.
Thanks. We couldn't do it without the admin, without the admin support, so we're very grateful.
Mr. LaBella, do you have a question?
Yeah, so, so this is the initial introduction. Are they going to be, are they gonna be, uh, like, so many weeks with the special groups and then reevaluate? Are you gonna go so long and then change the groups as needed? Or are we just doing it early in the process?
Well, this is actually our second year, so we've been doing it for a year and a half. Each year, we found that we're just making improvements. On the last, like, the last year, we do surveys of the staff and students. So we're always being, trying to be fluid and flexible. But they do need twice a month right now for the full school.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
In regard to the small group setting, if this is being conducted in homeroom or the first-period class, what are we considering to be a small group?
I guess it depends on the size of your first-period class. I think the numbers in a first-period class for the teachers varies from probably fifteen to maybe twenty-five at this point.
Is that going to be looked at if you are really working? And I'm not questioning the merit of the program. It sounds like a very good program with a wonderful vision and goal. However, if we're talking about small groups, fifteen to twenty-five is not a small group and is somewhat inhibiting for others to be open and sharing, et cetera.
We're taking that into consideration. We're really trying to improve every year, and we're looking at numbers and scheduling as we, as we move forward. It's just definitely something we're considering.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
The, the special needs population, are they, uh, I'm sure that they are, but are they able to access this curriculum as they would the other curriculum?
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, oh, one hundred percent. All of the accommodations, I could speak to that because I co-teach my first period that is also my advisory that I share as well. And all of the accommodations that we would incorporate are definitely there as well.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Quick question. On the citations, could you tell us where they're from?
The first one was from the book. The first one that I spoke about was from the book, Turning Points. And they're in the slides as well. And then we had quotes from some surveys that were taken from the teachers. And the last one, I can be back soon.
Keels, twenty twenty.
Thank you.
So I just really want to compliment these amazing educators for seeing a real need in our school during probably one of the hardest times we'll ever have to deal with at Whittier during COVID. I hope the hardest, because it certainly was a difficult couple, three years that we've been going through. And they really stepped up and did what they could to make sure that we were taking care of the kids. But beyond that, all of the teachers stepped up and did something that was beyond their comfort zone because some of the things we were asking them to do and have discussions were beyond their comfort zone. And when we say it's about the kids and we need to do this for our kids, they all stepped up and did it. They did get support. They did have some coaching, but they all did it. And I'm truly forever grateful because I think it really benefited our kids because this has been really, really difficult on them. And our staff really have done an amazing job taking care of our kids.
Thank you very much. It was a great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Principals report, Mr. Leganis.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Superintendent Lynch, and the rest of the school committee members. Before our colleagues leave, I just want to congratulate them too. You know, we celebrate the guidance team for the entire week and national guidance, National School Guidance Councils. Thanks again before you leave. I just thank you for every day. You know, the tireless work like Ms. Lynch says and what they do every day and beyond with students around the clock, you know? And Ms. Lynch and I can tell you, we get calls on Friday and Saturday, and this is all about making our kids safe. So thanks, they're just amazing, that whole bullpen. So my principals report, Whittier Sports, just a couple highlights here. Wrestling team, Whittier Wrestling Team won the CAC League by knocking off Essex Tech for the first time ever. They knocked off Shaqeen, which is usually, Shaqeen usually wins. Also, Whittier Amesbury Hockey Team is rolling towards a state tournament. I'm gonna, if I can steal the superintendent later, maybe, we're gonna, we might go over to Ward Hill, then they're playing Newburyport tonight at eight o'clock. So interesting. They're having some real successful seasons. Staff development for today. Whittier continues to celebrate Black History Month. And today, the staff, they posted and shared lessons and planned activities for the PD Day today, and everybody got into it. Very successful. The goal was to research contributions of African-Americans in the content area and create lessons to teach the students. So it was a nice PD today, and, you know, we're gonna continue that as well. All students have completed midterms. We're well on our way in third quarter and our new last day, and Kevin, hopefully, this is correct, June sixteenth. And that's our hundred-and-eightieth day, and today was our hundredth day. So, and just some, some stats for you. Congratulations goes out to our guidance team. We talked about that in School Counselors Week and just the tireless work they're doing every day with these kids. During our winter vacation, speaking about taking care of kids, Monday, February twenty-second to the twenty-fifth, we're offering our boot camp as well as a tenant's makeup camp for the four days of the vacation from eight to twelve. And again, this is, you know, coincided with our learning loss with the COVID. And we didn't realize we're gonna be in this position again, but we're opening up now in February. So this is great for the kids and get them up to par, hopefully. The freshmen have chosen their shops, and we'll start in their vocational areas February sixteenth. And the guidance team have been interviewing at middle schools. And I believe the interviews will all be done by the beginning of March. So they're very busy as well. And you heard Ms. Lynch say about the seven hundred applicants. So pretty amazing stuff. The Booster Club is very happy. You know, Ms. Lynch and I, giving them the go-ahead to sell stuff. And I, I just, I want to thank them, you know, because it's tough with this, the COVID journey that we're on, selling merchandise and snacks. And, you know, at times, we said, "Sorry, you can't be in the building." And they're back. And just thanks goes out to Heather, Rhonda, and Janice for working and fundraising for our students, student athletes. And then finally, I have this year's high school play is Clue, based on iconic nineteen eighty-five Paramount movie, which was inspired by the classic Hasbro board game. If you remember the game, Clue, is a hilarious farce meets murder mystery. The dates, if you want to pencil these in, for the play, Friday, the eighteenth, three eighteen, March eighteenth, Saturday, March nineteenth. Both of those are at seven PM. And then on Sunday, the twentieth, at two PM. And that's all I have for you tonight.
Any questions for the principal?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Stay healthy.
Business manager report, Kara Carson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Superintendent, members of the committee. Couple of things for you tonight. The first is I just wanted to inform you of a bid result. We had a bid for four new school buses. It was awarded to DATCO Incorporated. They were the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of two eighty-one thousand five hundred, two hundred and eighty-one thousand five hundred. As you may recall, we have kind of a blended fleet of buses. We lease seventeen, we own ten. So these would be replacing some of the ten that we own that are five years old. And the reason we lease some and we buy some is because of the mileage requirements. Because as you know, we travel to Ipswich and Newburyport and Plum Island and all that, and we want to stay within the mileage. So that is why we continue to still buy some of the buses. And we'll evaluate when it comes time in two years to reevaluate the lease. And if there are, we see that we can get more buses that we lease instead of owning them all, we'll make an adjustment then. So that goes along with the next thing that I'm asking, requesting is an appropriation of regional transportation fund. We get transportation monies, and most of it we use to offset the transportation costs. But we also keep some in abeyance for replacement of equipment. So I'm asking your approval to appropriate, oh my God, my number is wrong, four hundred and ten thousand. Let me see. I'm sorry. I think it's four ten seven sixty-three. I typed it wrong here. Lisa, do you have the number?
It's four seven two sixty.
Okay, yeah, sorry. Four hundred and seven thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars. And that is to fund the purchase of four new school buses, new cameras on the school buses, and a portion of the bus lease payment.
Move approval.
Second. Second. Any questions?
What was the number again? Four oh seven two six three.
Mr. LaBella, good question.
The, the extra money for the leases, isn't that a budget item?
It is a budget item. The. The revolving fund has to be spent or it goes, it reverts back into the general fund. So this would, we got a lot of transportation money last year. So we want to make sure that we use it for transportation costs. So that's why we would pay some of the lease with that.
What about the money that's in there for the budget?
That, our bus costs are anticipated to be up this year because of increased prices. So this would mitigate that on that end.
Sounds good. Anyone else?
Kara?
Yes.
The, the money for the cameras, I assume that's for the new buses?
Actually, it's for all the buses. One of the things we invested in, Mr. Irving, was cameras on the stop signs. There's a, there's a lot of talk about people that go around the bus on the left at the stop signs. And after speaking with the bus coordinator and the superintendent, we wanted to be able to have cameras for that, for the safety of our students, and to be able to, you know, document people that are doing that at, when the buses are stopped. It happens, unfortunately, more frequently than you can imagine. So we thought it was a really good safety measure to put on our buses.
So all of your buses will be retrofitted?
Yes, they will. They, we have cameras on in front, but these are to the left of the bus where these things were happening.
Plus the new buses, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Kara, do we have a delivery date on these buses? Recently read that this.
That is. They are telling us, we've asked them to have them here in June after school gets out because that gives us time to put the lettering on the sides, get the cameras installed. We don't know. They're saying it could be July or August. Last year, we ordered a van in February, and we received it in August. So.
At least you got it.
We got it, yeah. So once we uncover the money, though the money has been put aside for it, it's just a question of delivery. Luckily, we own these buses, so it's not like we're gonna be short buses and we have to turn the lease back in.
Are we trading buses in?
Yes. Yes, we are.
All right, thank you. You need a vote on this, is that correct?
It's already the moves?
Motion, yes. We'll get a second. So we have to roll call vote. Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. LaBella?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Havilin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
This is true.
Yes.
Mr. Irving?
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde?
Yes.
Thank you. And one final thing. I'm requesting your approval of the Whitsons Food Service Management Company contract. And it is amendment number four. And just to remind you, the original RFP that we put out was required under the state to be five, it was for a five-year period, but the Bureau of Nutrition requires that we do them in one-year approval increments. And that way, this request is for year four of that contract. Just as an aside, I have to say that the Whitsons contract, the people have, the food service manager and the food service staff have been phenomenal. They've been offering grab and go for our students. Lunch servings are up to over a hundred meals served per day. The free lunch, the students are really taking advantage of the free breakfast and lunch, and our food service people are really stepping up and making sure that our kids are fed and, and they're getting the things that they want to eat. So I just wanted to congratulate them.
Move approval.
Second.
Questions? Mr. LaBella?
Yeah. Is there any legal aspirations with this?
I'm sorry?
Any legal issues with this?
No, the legal issue is that they have, the contracts have to be renewed every year, even though you approved a five-year contract.
Should we approve a five-year contract?
Mm-hmm.
So what happens next year? We don't renew? We go nothing, no?
I believe that there is, there is a clause in there that you probably have a sixty-day out if you needed, if you wanted to not do it, but I'd have to look at it.
All right. Because they could come back and say, "Wait, I got a five-year contract. You gotta pay us the last two years."
Early?
Yeah, I just talked to a couple of the staff members in the kitchen. They told me great company to work for, great school to work for. So I condemn Kara, you and your staff, Superintendent. Thank you.
No more questions? We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. LaBella?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Havilin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Troop?
Yes.
Mr. Irving?
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Stay well, everyone.
Thank you.
You too.
You as well.
Chairperson. March annual agenda items. We have school committee self-evaluation and budget review. You value these. On our electronics? Oh, it is? Oh, okay. All right. Subcommittee reports, executive. This, minutes of the meeting are in your packet. Need a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call vote, Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. LaBella?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Havilin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
This is true.
Yes.
Irving?
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde?
Yes.
Instructional personnel, Dr. Testaverde.
We have nothing to report this month, thank you.
Okay. When operations, Mr. Tucker?
Have not met. I don't know if we need a meeting. It's wintertime.
Not at this time.
As long as we plow the driveway.
I think they have their hands full.
We're good till spring.
Salary negotiations, Mr. Early?
We've had a couple meetings on it. We're gonna discuss that in executive session.
And we have minutes to approve and vote on?
Yes.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call vote, Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. LaBella?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Havilin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Troop?
Yes.
Mr. Irving?
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde?
Yes.
Policy, Mr. Irving?
We have not met. I don't believe we need a meeting, but Superintendent can let us know when we do.
We don't need that.
We're okay. Meeting dates. Meeting dates. Budget workshop. Right to the next school committee meeting, March ninth at five thirty. The school committee will be at six thirty. There is no new business posted. And I need a motion to enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the WREA Teachers Union as an open meeting. May have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. And upon completion of executive session, we will return to open session.
So move.
We need a roll call vote. Motion, you know, roll call vote to go into executive session.
You had a motion?
Oh, okay.
So moved.
Second?
One second.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. LaBella?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Havilin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Trope?
Yes, sorry.
Mr. Irving? Dr. Testaverde?
Yes.
We're back into regular session. We need to take a vote on what was discussed in executive. Mr. Tucker?
I would like to make a motion to accept the salary for the WREA Teachers Union at a two and a half percent for each year for three years and a four hundred and fifty dollar cell increase.
Second.
Accept the tentative agreement.
As per the tentative agreement that we have in our paperwork.
I think it's a, isn't a memorandum of agreements?
Yeah, the tentative agreement. Because there's other.
Okay.
I, I, I agree with that.
All right.
I'll second that.
We have a second, okay. Any discussion? All right. Roll call vote, Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. LaBella?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Havilin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Trope?
Yes.
Mr. Irving?
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde?
Present.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
So I guess.
Okay. Roll call vote, Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. LaBella?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor? Sure. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Havilin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Trope?
Sounds good.
Mr. Irving? Dr. Testaverde?
Yes.